Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission, November 15th, 2022. And I think we probably ought to establish a quorum.
Good morning.
Mr. Wathers?
Here.
Ms. Kupner?
Here.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. Hoff?
Here.
Mr. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Klosick? The last time I'll be saying this, Commissioner Wance?
Here.
Secretary Eisenberg?
Here.
Mr. Chair, please let the record reflect that seven members are present, and we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next item on our agenda is review and approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the one that's been submitted to us?
Well, you've seen, we had two revisions to the agenda. The first revision was, there was an incorrect date for the administrative rules for the 2023 proposed meeting dates. And then the next revision was the removal of item number 10, which was the concept site plan for a lens stole or second amended. They pulled that from today's meeting. So those are the two.
All right. So with those adjustments, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve today's agenda.
A second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sounds unanimous. We'll move on to item five, which is review and approval of the minutes from October 18th and November 2nd. Any suggested edits or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'd be happy to entertain a motion that they be approved.
Make a motion to approve minutes?
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That sounds unanimous also.
The minutes from the 18th of October and the 2nd of November are approved. Commission member reports. The only thing I'd like to say is that it's, my understanding, this is Commissioner Wance's last meeting, is that right?
That's correct, sir.
So I'd like to use this platform to say, thank you. It's been a genuine pleasure working with you and on this commission, and you've brought so much to it, your insight, your patience, your just thoughtfulness and guidance, and I think we're all better for that. And so just want to say on behalf of the commission, thank you. We'll miss you.
Thank you. Means a lot. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Well, sure. It's kind of bittersweet. Matt, before I forget, as often as I've sat on that stupid bridge, I'd love to run or walk across it. So, congrats to Grant on that. But, yeah, kind of bittersweet. You know, I'm on my farewell tour, if you will, this week. A lot of committees still to come. But, you know, I always say, thank you to you folks. We've seen some really good planning members come and go, and I think we've got an incredible, an incredible group right now that you guys had some, have had some interesting and difficult decisions, and there'll be more to come, but you've handled those incredibly well. And that's just not coming from me, it's coming from all of my colleagues. We truly appreciate the fact that you all are focused, and you have the best interest of the county, and I think we have a great group of people here. So it goes without saying that we truly do appreciate, we're only as good as the folks we surround ourselves with, and you are certainly a big part of that. So, thank you to all of you for all that you've done. I know a couple, one or two maybe going off here at some point, but several of you will be here for a while. So, thank you for stepping up, and we truly do appreciate that. Lot of accomplishments in the last eight years. This group of commissioners, I believe, has done, you know, remarkable job. We went through that crazy thing called a master plan. That, did you sleep at all for like?
No. I did not.
We've gone through comprehensive rezoning to the nth degree that I don't think has ever been done before in the history of this county. We just finished up our ag remainder decisions last week, was it? I'm losing track of time.
Yes, our conservation was complete.
Right. So, as it pertains to what you guys do, we've done a lot as well. And we can only do that working together, and we truly think that we're working together now. And we're very hopeful that the next group coming in, 19 days away, who's counting, will take that torch and run with it. And, you know, that's, this county does an amazing job. And in my travels, most of you know that I've represented Carroll in a lot of things in the state. And there's no question in my mind, based on listening and working with my colleagues around the state, that we do it better than anybody. We really do. So we have a lot to be proud of. So, I appreciate the kind words, Jeff. I'm not disappearing, contrary to what the rumors are. I'll be around. I've got mom and dad here and kids, so, not going anywhere anytime soon, but it's been an honor and a privilege to serve all of you over the last eight years. Not something a lot of folks get to say, and I take that with the utmost respect. So, thank you to you all, and listen, keep up the good work. You're doing amazing work down here, all of you. And you know, Jeff, all of us, with Janice, we've said this before to our staff, I mean, talk about top-notch. You, I mean, they're just the best staff anywhere. And that will forever be ingrained in my mind, too, because, jeez, I hear the horror stories in other counties, and I'm like, good grief. We've got some really good people, and dedicated, just like you all are. So, thank you very much, keep up the good work, and I'm pretty sure I may be watching from time to time.
Uh-oh. That sounded like a threat.
Now we'll be up to three viewers. My wife, my mother-in-law. Commissioner, that all means a lot.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Very good. Well then, Madam Secretary, we'll turn it over to you for the administrative report.
Good morning, everyone, and again, thank you, Commissioner Wance, for your service, your support to this planning commission, to me and to my staff. We could not have done it without this Board of Commissioners, all the things that we've accomplished over the last eight years, and most recently, the comprehensive rezoning. I'm going to brief you all on an update regarding that. We have a pretty quick meeting, so to speak, today, a lot coming up, but I did want to brief you on where we ended up with the ag conservation. As Commissioner Wance said, we completed that, and the commissioners officially adopted it. I'm sorry, this passes early. Officially adopted it, oh, what was that, last week, Mary?
The week.
The week before, oh, the dates are all getting blurred. Adopted it, and most of the recommendations that this body made moved forward with the Board of County Commissioners. We had a lot of discussion, we had a really good public hearing with some public comment coming in, mostly regarding ag remainders. And that was the biggest change from what this body sent up to the Board of County Commissioners was the discussion of how to handle remaining portions on ag properties. So basically, what that is, we've talked about this before, is once the residential densities have been removed, there's still ability to develop on those properties. And how you can develop is what are the primary principal uses and conditional uses within the ag zone. And so those would be like your schools, daycare centers, religious establishments, things of that nature that can be built, assisted living on ag remaining portions. And those were unlimited in the extent that it was the care and capacity of the ag remaining portion. So the commissioners, you know, reviewed that information, and Commissioner Weaver felt particularly strongly that we review how, how much, how much more do we want to really do with that? Do we want to limit its ability to move any further, to be able to subdivide those even more, and maybe put some limits on the ag remaining portions? I'm just going to pull up for you, and I apologize, where this ended up, so you can just see the text itself. Oh, we don't have a mobile. All right, so here's the comprehensive ag conservation. This was the last of the districts, so I'm happy to say, we have scrubbed the code, we went through things, not to say that we won't have amendments from time to time, and you all have seen different amendments come forward on various things as time goes on. I mean, the codes are organic, they're changing, they have that potential to change. So, I will just show you. Mary, is this the summary?
It's 155, because you want the exact language, the third?
No, but this is all of the 158 changes that were actually adopted.
And at the bottom it is.
Okay, perfect. So the agritourism definition was adopted, the country and event facility change to re, delete that definition of country, and that's been very problematic over the years. So that was amended. The purposes of the districts were changed to reflect what's in the master plans for agricultural and conservation. Really did a lot of looking at the use tables and really distinguishing between agricultural zoning and conservation zoning, what conservation means, limiting a lot of the more intense uses in those conservation districts. Changed how accessory dwelling units are allowed on these properties to allow them to be detached as opposed to attached. So we have those additional options. It doesn't change what's allowed, just changes how they're developed or built. Changing contractor equipment storage yards to have a minimum acreage and different separation requirements, as well as commercial kennels. And then for 155, which is the subdivision, cluster development was the same amendment that was done in the residential districts, where you don't have to do basically the conventional plan as well as the cluster plan in order to have the cluster approved. It will now be formula-based on what, and that was to establish density, the formula-based on to establish what the clustered density would be allowed. And this was the biggest change, as I said, the agricultural remaining portions. So the development on ag remaining portions for non-agricultural purposes will be limited to one use. That is the proposal that went forward with the Board of County Commissioners to public hearing. There was a lot of opposition to just the one use, so at the end of the day, the commissioners came up with a compromise, and so now it is two uses, and it's on a scale based on acreage. So, zero to 40 acres is one additional use on a remaining portion, and greater than 40 is two additional uses. And you still get your subdivision portion, so you would still, that's the remaining portion, so you still take off your residential densities, and then you would be left with two additional uses depending on the size of your remaining portion for development. And that was really the biggest change that, as I said, that came out of this. So, again, this proposal limits development to one non-agricultural use for the first 40 acres, and two for properties over 40, not including the remaining allowed residential And so those are the big changes that happened in the ag conservation district. These go into effect December 1st. So anyone that has a site plan in process, they've worked with development review prior to that December 1st action date, then they're good, they can proceed with the plans that they've, they have. So, there, we've grandfathered that in, as we did with the other zoning districts as we've gone through this. We've always grandfathered in projects in process, because we don't want to penalize anyone for having promoted and worked on something and make them change midway. So those are the changes that we have from our portion of the ag conservation. Do you have any questions or comments? Okay. The reason I say it that way is because Laura Mathias, her team worked on, as you know, a lot of revisions to 155 over the last several months. They were a lot of technical changes. Here you go, Laura. And they just completed those and had those adopted as well. So we're just going to briefly update you on those changes. Also, just want to point out that we are meeting with the Board of Zoning Appeals to walk them through what the changes are and to update them, so they can also hit the ground running. As we did with the other districts, we met with them and presented to them what the changes are, so they know when projects come before them from BZA, what is applicable and what's changed, just so they can be aware. I mean, obviously, they read the code themselves, but I think always briefing is helpful for them.
But the changes seem relatively minor.
Very much so.
From when they left here.
Absolutely. Melvin Bale was part of our group, the work group, and then he was part of our concept team, and Mary's been working very closely with him. So we know that the BZA as well is really well informed, but we just want to, again, brief them on the entire changes of the ag conservation.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Awesome. Good morning. So the 155 changes, you saw those as well before they went to the Board of County Commissioners. And that, I didn't write the adoption date down, but it was in October, the board heard it again as a final and adopted everything that we had proposed. And I don't have a visual for you, because most of our changes were for, you know, they were streamlining clarity, predictability of our code. So reorganization, to make it very clear, I want to subdivide, okay, how, what can you do and how do you do it? Right? So we put everything in sequence in our code to make it very clear for someone especially who's opening that for the first time. So, again, I think the biggest highlight for us is that we have absorbed our development review manual into the code, whatever was necessary from this manual. We will invite you all to the retirement party for the manual. You will never see this again, so, that's exciting for us. So that's been absorbed into the code, and some key things that we added were not only from the manual, but definitions that we felt were missing, they were maybe in the zoning code, but not in our code, but very relative to our code. So we pulled that in, and then in the manual, we also had simplified site plans, which you're familiar with at a certain level. You don't see those, because they get through more of an administrative process. So we pulled those criteria into the code, codified that. The other exciting thing, I, exciting, for us, maybe, but we were, in regards to plans of subdivision, we were getting road frontage dedication to the county. We weren't seeing that with site plans, it wasn't required. So we did add that into the code, except in the ag district. So, that will, that will be a positive, I think, overall. So that will, that will be a positive, I think, overall. Key things that were removed, we still had, maybe it was, I would say, integrated at this point because of how we process our site plans, we had a plan called environmental site delineation. That used to be submitted in advance of a plan, which showed all the environmental aspects. Well, nowadays, all of that is, is compiled into the plan sets that you see, that we see. So there was no need to have an additional requirement. So that was removed. The other big item was that we took our parking space requirements. So the requirements are typically based on the use, right, and how many employees or your square footage, et cetera. So the use goes hand in hand with the zoning code and the uses as outlined in the zoning code. So we worked together with planning zoning to get those parking space requirements put into the zoning code and put those in an appropriate place in the zoning code. Now, the design elements of that, which relates to the site plan, are staying within 155. So what, what you have in terms of design is still in there, but how many spaces you have will be in the zoning code. And the other thing that may impact you to a certain degree is the, a modification that we made to an administrative modification whereby the, these use and common driveways, which you saw a couple last month, right, for width variance, we modified the percentage that the director can review. That doesn't mean that they won't ever come back before you, it just means that the director has a little more leeway in their authority to review those. And i- if it comes down to a lot of these technical, right, what's, what's the hardship, right? Is there actually like a site hardship with the contours, with impeding on a wetland, et cetera? So from a technical standpoint, the director will be able to review those and issue those modifications if they see fit. So that could be good news for you all, hopefully.
It sounds like we'll then only get the controversial ones.
Well, right, we want to keep it exciting, we don't want to take all of that off your plate, so. So that, that's a summary of the 155 changes, and they will be going into effect the same day we're, we're compiling everything together, and that December 1st date will be the date that you'll see those changes, so.
Very good. Questions? Yep. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Do you have any extensions?
No.
Okay, so no extensions then for this month, so that's good. And then I'll have Abigail Rogers brief you on BZA cases.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we have, on October 5th, there was the continuation of 6404, which was Mulligan Recovery Center. That was the substance abuse recovery center. And that was in the R10,000 zone of Westminster, and that case was denied. And we only have for November 1 case coming up on the 30th, and that's case 6419, Hoxstad Properties LLC. It's a contractor's equipment storage yard with variances in the agricultural zone off Hanover Pike in Manchester, and that's Commissioner District 1. And we, the planning staff, found the use consistent. And once again, that'll be heard on the 30th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mary, is the 30th the day that you're going before the BZA? Yeah, so the 30th, that's when we'll be briefing the BZA on these changes that take effect the next day. So, so they'll have that before that happens. I have no other updates for the administrative report this morning.
All right, thank you. So we'll go on to item eight, which is election of commission chair, vice chair, and secretary. So looks like we have some notes to work through here.
Yes, so we have a script in your packet.
Yes.
To walk through the elections.
All right, so we'll work our way through this. So I'll begin with hold the record open for the board position of secretary. Are there any nominees for the board position of secretary?
I make a motion that we nominate Linda Eisenberg for the board position of secretary.
Very good. A motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a second. So we have a motion and we have a second. Are there any other nominations for the board position of secretary? Hearing none. All those in favor of electing Linda Eisenberg for the board position of secretary, please say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Madam Secretary.
Thank you.
To give you the gavel.
Yes, for the brief moment in time. Thank you.
The power that resides in that, yes. Want to sit here, Linda?
All right, so now I have the ceremonial gavel. In accordance with the rules and procedures of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Carroll County, I now declare nominations open for the office of chair. So I need a board member to nominate one of your counterparts to the office of chair.
I would like to nominate Jeff Wathers for the office of chair.
And is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Jeff Wathers has been nominated and seconded for the office of chair. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Okay, seeing none. I would like to close the nomination for the office of chair and have a vote to elect Jeff Wathers for the office of chair. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so congratulations, Mr. Wathers, for serving as chair again. I appreciate that. And then next, we'll go back and we're going to vote for vice chair.
All right, thank you all very much. We now accept nominations for the office of vice chair.
I'll make the motion to nominate Janice Kirchner.
And is there a second?
A second.
Very good. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? All right, then we will close the nominations for vice chair. And I think we actually need a motion and a second to close the nominations for vice chair. Is there a motion that we close the nominations for vice chair?
I'll move to close.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so that's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor of the motion to elect Janice Kirchner for vice chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Sounds unanimous to me. Congratulations, Vice Chair. And I think that concludes the election process.
Yeah, great, congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Wathers and Ms. Kirchner, for serving as chair and vice chair for the next year. As you know, we do this every November, so if you wish to serve in the future, 2023.
Yes, and thank you all very much. Appreciate your trust.
It's the easiest thing I've had to do in a long time.
Next, we'll go on to item nine, which is administrative rules and proposed 2022 meeting dates. They were provided to us in our packet. And are there any changes to the administrative rules from last year?
No, there are no changes to the administrative rules. From time to time, we have had issues that have come up over the course of a year that have, you know, alerted us to maybe making some very minor changes to this. This is the first year in a while that we have not had to make any changes to our rules of procedure and operation. So do we need to re-sign these again, Jim, for this year?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so we need to sign and approve the administrative rules of procedure and operation as presented in your packets.
Do we need to approve that?
Do you just want to sign those?
Or?
Okay, I think we probably do. Probably it'd be prudent to hold a motion, have a motion.
Hold a motion for approval, correct.
I guess, should we do it separately for the meeting dates and the, do we need to approve the meeting dates?
Um, we should, yes. And we'll go back to that, just want to make sure there's just a couple of differences in dates.
Why don't we start with the administrative rules of procedure and operation? So is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve the amended administrative rules and procedures and operations of the Carroll County Planning and Zoning Commission as amended November 16th, 2021. I'll say we keep it as is.
A second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the rules as amended, administrative rules as amended November 16th, 2021. Is there any further discussion about these? I would, I would just note, we've had good discussions over the years. We've dealt with the idea of virtual and snow days and how the alternate works and the authority. I think we've added some nice clarity there and predictability. So I have a very high comfort level with, with these rules. So we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or standing? Okay, the rules are, they stand approved. I'm signing them now. Dating them today, passing them to Madam Clerk. Thank you. And then, so we have the 2023 proposed meeting dates. And Madam Secretary, were there some items you wanted to point out?
Yeah, just a few. Again, we have our first Wednesday of the month evening meeting. We have winter Mako is January 4th through the 6th. So right now, we still anticipate having that coming off the holidays, however, there may not be an ex officio in attendance for that. So just wanted to make you aware, unless there's any changes, if there's any reason that you think we should cancel that meeting, maybe that was something we can discuss now before we adopt this and not have that meeting. As always, we look at the July 4th week, and July 5th happens to be a Wednesday evening. So we've typically canceled that in the past, so if that is something you still want to continue, we'll, we'll cancel that date as well. August 15th is summer Mako, however, Mako won't start till the 16th, so I suggest we keep that and not switch the date for that meeting. And again, November 21st is our daytime meeting, so, you know, thoughts on changing that to the 14th, like we've done this year, to move it a week before the Thanksgiving holiday? And then the evening of December 6th is the winter Mako. That will be more robust that year because we'll have a whole, Mr., a whole year with new elected officials, and it might be a little challenging for that December 6th date. And then again, the December 19th, which I think is far enough from the Christmas holiday that we can leave that as is. So do you have any proposed, would you like to have some of these, meet, meeting dates amended now before we adopt this?
July 5th, definitely.
Definitely cancel.
Cancel that?
Yeah.
Should we, should we cancel that or move it to the 12th? My thought is, there's a lot of stuff coming down the pipeline, and to have that gap.
Well, we have a meeting on the 18th.
Okay.
So in keeping in mind, July, summer vacation months, it tends to get a little tough, so I would, I would be okay with just canceling it.
I could go either way, I'm just thinking to just keep things moving through the process.
Well, it is a work session, so it's not typically a business meeting where we would be taking action on site plans or subdivision. So this is more of a, you know, a planning exercise, you know, anything that we'd have to bring up on anything that we're currently working on. And I think one Wednesday we can, you know, get away with it. They're pretty flexible for those virtual evening meetings.
And we intend to do that, continue to do that virtually?
Unless there is a change that you all would like to see. I think the Wednesday work sessions virtually have been working out quite nicely.
I think it works well. I appreciate y'all letting us do it that way. So, yeah. I mean, if I, if, if we were to take these one at a time, it makes sense to me that we would cancel the July 5th meeting.
And any thoughts on the January 4th meeting?
Yeah, the January 4th, I tend to think we probably ought to just go ahead and, and we've done that historically, we've gotten rid of it.
Yeah.
It's coming out of the holidays, you've got it, the competition with winter Mako. So I think that, I don't think it's going to interfere with the business of the commission if we were to get rid of this January 4th evening meeting unless someone feels strongly to the contrary. The, I would be inclined to keep the August 15th in place. I know we've got the summer Mako, but, you know, as we get to the end of July, we'll get a sense of sort of our workload at that point. If it looks like we don't need to have it, we could make a decision then, but maybe better to keep that one, that one on, on the schedule. December 6th was the other one that.
November 21st, we want to move that to the 14th.
Oh, yeah, right. Yeah, change that to the 14th for Thanksgiving. And December 6th, probably, I don't know, I'm, I'm.
Well, we have one on the 29th.
Yeah, if we do one on the 29th, that like we just cancel.
That's true. That's an excellent point. They're both evening meetings. Yeah, so I think we could cancel the, get rid of the December 6th one.
Okay.
So it looks like then the amendments are, we'll delete January 4th, delete Janu-, uh, July 5th, we're going to change the 21st of November to the 14th of November due to Thanksgiving, and delete December 6th.
Perfect.
Okay, so with those, are there any other proposed changes that anyone would like to make?
Looks good.
All right, so with those edits, I'd be happy to entertain a motion that the dates be approved.
I'll make the motion that we accept the changed calendar, the amended calendar.
Second that?
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or standing? Sounds like we have an approved meeting schedule for 2023.
All right, great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's see, so item 10 is deleted. So next, we have a recess, I guess, and then we've got two discussion items, is that right? That's what I'm seeing.
Yes, and, and we don't need a recess unless you would like to.
May I ask, does anyone need a recess? Do you want to move through?
Yep.
Okay, let's roll on into what was item 12, Historic Preservation Commission Discussion.
The recess?
All right, so at our last meeting, we discussed with you the possibility of establishing the commission of the Historic Preservation Commission under the Planning Commission, have the Planning Commission as needed from time to time, sit in as the HPC. So with that, I have Hannah and Jim with me today to kind of go over that. We might have had a little glitch, though, in the ability to do this, we've recently found out. So I'm going to have Jim explain to you a little bit about where we are and where we can possibly go with this, because we thought it would be a good idea to try to merge the group and, and do something different. Because, you know, it's so hard to stand up these volunteer groups, and they're down to limited membership, so with that, I'm going to turn it to Jim, thank you.
Sure. So in working through all this, it's, there were some legal wrinkles that we're going to need to iron out, dealing with the establishment of the authority of the Historic Preservation Commission under the umbrella, so to speak, of the Planning Commission. Just to give you a sort of thousand view, view of sort of how state law interacts with local law is, the county doesn't have any police power when it comes to issues with historic preservation. All the power that the county gets from historic preservation comes from the state, and the state does that through enabling legislation. And they've, in the land use article, Article 8, have provided enabling legislation for local governments and municipalities to establish historic preservation commissions to, you know, look over historic districts, approve improvements of structures in historic districts, approve easements. So that is, the state has given the counties the ability to create such a commission to do, to have that authority. The counties, on the other hand, have the ability to draw the boundaries of historic districts, and it is the counties, through zoning and permits and development review, that enforce, I guess, the historic, the decisions of the Historic Preservation Commission. So in looking at all that, and also, just to back up, the enabling legislation for the Historic Preservation Commission has a membership component, and part of that membership component says, "Commission shall consist of at least five members, and then each member of the commission shall have a demonstrated special interest, specific knowledge, or professional or academic training in," and it gives a whole host of different topics, history, architecture, planning, anthropology, conservation, et cetera. So in looking at having the. So, in looking at having the Planning Commission sit for the, for the HPC, there are just some fine details we need to work out to make sure that we're not running afoul of the state enabling legislation. Because a situation I don't want to run into for you guys is, say we do this and you get the authority and you sit in as the Historic Preservation Commission, and you approve something, and in a shocking turn of events, some neighbors are upset.
Hypothetically.
And they appeal that, you know, through our process, and it goes all the way to the Circuit Court or, what's it going to be now, Mr. Wathers? The Court of Appeals? Or, because we're going to have the Supreme Court, and then?
I've forgotten.
Is it like the court, I don't know what the intermediary, it might just be the Court of Appeals?
Yeah.
So, which is very new. So, anyway, I don't want a situation where you guys approve something and then a judge or a panel of judges says, "Well, where do you have the authority to do this?" Because it says only a historic planning commission can do this, not a planning commission, which then would make the decision you made on that issue null and void and put us all back at square one. So, that's why, and I've been working with Linda on this, we just want to make sure that we're airtight moving forward on this. And I agree with the objective. I know it's so hard to get, you know, members, especially when you have a component in the state law that sort of has qualifications for those members. So, anyway, I just wanted to let you know, that was my thinking with this, that we're just moving forward at a sort of deliberate process to make sure we get this right and not rush into anything and have problems be caused down the road.
You said the enabling legislation is an Article 8 of the?
Land use article.
And our concern is too with the HPC as it currently stands with three members remaining, is if you don't have the commission, you can't enforce the historic district overlay. So, then that overlay almost becomes meaningless without the commission to have the hearings to make the approvals. So, we're kind of in this little quandary of what to do if we don't have membership for that commission. And to be able to have, you know, meetings where they make a quorum to make the decisions. And, you know, just like with anything, it either rains or pours. We either cancel, cancel meetings, and we don't have anything happening, or all of a sudden, you have all these applications for exterior renovations, and then they're meeting frequently, and sometimes they get contentious. So, we just want to make sure before we get to any of those points that, as Jim said, we have our i's dotted and t's crossed with that. So, we appreciate your patience in working with us. And hopefully, we're going to be working with Maryland Historical Trust because they're the overarching body guiding this to see what suggestions they have and what they've experienced.
Are other counties having similar issues?
That I'm not aware of. I don't know. Not every county has historic districts either. So, it really just depends jurisdiction to jurisdiction and how they enforce it. Even within our own county, we have just historic districts throughout the county, but only three or four of them actually have a historic preservation commission to enforce the district.
So, each historic district has to have its own historic preservation commission?
Within the boundary. So, the county, we would have one, even if we had multiple districts, it would just be one HPC for all our historic districts. But all of our municipalities have their own regulatory authority. So, they would need to establish them within their own jurisdiction.
So, there's a lot of qualifications, qualifiers, five members, all the historical knowledge, education background, that's?
And also says interest too.
Yeah, it's?
Pretty burdensome.
Yeah, special interest, specific knowledge, or professional or academic training in.
Right.
And it gives a whole list of different things.
Is there any opportunity for crossover with, for example, Westminster has a historic preservation. Could they serve on all boards or?
Individual members?
Yeah. Just thinking about solutions.
So, from a municipality? I mean, I know at the county, we don't have members serving on more than one commission.
Right.
First, like you guys can't sit on the DZA.
But this is so specific and so narrow. I'm just thinking of a solution that a possibility of?
Yeah, I'm thinking through this as well.
Or whatever could serve crossover on boards. That could be a solution to the problem.
So, it talks about training. Is there someplace to learn?
Well, it's, again, it's not a required training. It's just, you know, because you could have a demonstrated special interest, which is, I think, the sort of catch-all for anyone who's ever, like, thought about history. So, like, I think the special training is, like, if you have it, great. But it's not a requirement. Like, there are no historical courses members are required to take when they're, you know, placed on these commissions.
And planning is one of the requirements, or one of the possibilities of the list of specialties. And I would say all of you have had not only planning knowledge, but planning training because we've brought those trainings to our planning commission. That's why we thought it was a good fit. So, if we can, you know, make this work. The other thing is we would also bring in historic preservation training and look to, as members leave here, perhaps to work to fill planning commission membership with some of this specialty if this is the direction we are able to move in. Because we know that the current chair of the Historic Preservation Commission is particularly passionate, and he would love to also be part of this body as well. So, we've suggested, when there's openings, put your application. And that's what we do, and then the commissioners vet those and make appointments to these boards and commissions. So, that would be a great resource.
Well, I appreciate, Jim, you spending time looking at the enabling legislation. Because obviously, if we're not in compliance with that, then everything we do would be annulity, potentially, and I totally get that. So, if we, if we're not comfortable that we're within that, we might have to take another approach.
Right, and then, the reason, again, this is before you, is not so much because of the enabling legislation, but also our code, it's codified. So, we need to change our zoning code. It's, that's the section that this resides in specifically. So, how our code works is that it's referred to Planning Commission from the Board of County Commissioners. So, the Board of County Commissioners referred this at their meeting last week. Now, it's before you for discussion and making amendments to our code. We can't do that till we're sure that we're meeting state requirements.
Okay, so you'll bring this back to us?
Yes. Absolutely.
Jeff, like, one comment is like, you know, if we can't bring it into this board, is it something that county could do that, you know, you have people that work at both, like Union Mills and the farm?
Art Museum?
The Farm Museum?
Oh, okay.
Could you bring those people? Because they do have a background in that kind of stuff, even though it's slightly different.
If they apply, but I don't know if they can be a county employee and serve on a commission. We've had that inquiry before, and I don't believe they can do that. Like, we can't, I, like, I can't have my staff or someone else from Public Works sit on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, that's where that comes into play. But that's a good thought, but yeah.
Well, you could ask them to have one of the, because most of them all have their own boards.
They do.
Maybe they could recommend one of their board members serve in that capacity.
Fertile, recruiting around.
Yeah.
Well, you could get your five people if you had, if you had to go down that path.
And Linda, is it the case that the Historic Preservation Commission that we currently have, it primarily focuses only on the overlay?
Correct. It only focuses on the historic district of Union Town overlay. However, that's not to say that that couldn't be expanded. And that was one of the discussion points, is to look at having other historic district overlays. And that process would be, again, established by the county through a planning type of process. And also getting the citizens, residents that have structures, housing, commercial buildings in the next historic district, let's say, to buy into it. Because it's not onerous, but it is cumbersome working through when you're in a historic district to make exterior renovation. And it would be late. So, we want to make sure that we have the majority buy-in of the area selected. And that's how Union Town actually was established. Union Town was established by the residents of Union Town. That wasn't the county coming. We worked very collaboratively when that was established to select that area's historic area.
I, somewhere in the recesses of my mind, I thought part of the function of that Historic Preservation Commission was to also kind of keep updated the list, the inventory, the list of historical properties in the entire county, not just Union Bridge. Is that the case?
Yes, I mean, so that is one of their roles, is to update. But we work with Maryland Historical Trust because they have the preservation specialists. But certainly, if, it would be within that purview. If they wanted to recommend something for the inclusion on the MHT list, that we would work with them to work with MHT to get that on the state's inventory. Unfortunately, being on the state inventory and the register, it offers really no protection.
It really doesn't. And I'll just say again, I actually spent some time going through that list. And some of those properties don't even exist now. I mean, they're, it references, you know, Three Bay homes that were built and such and such. And they're gone. They're not there. I mean, if you drive by the property, it's not that it's dilapidated, it's not there. And so, there's some serious updating on that inventory list. Just, and again, this is just me driving around because I was interested in the history of the area. And it was amazing how, there's some neat properties to see. But then, you know, also, you know, I don't have the right to go on the property and see what's out there. So, it's just kind of windshield-ing, you know, this has to be where it was. It's not there. The barn's gone, the house is gone. Anyway, I'll stop. But that, the inventory list that shows up is impressive until you go look for it. And then it's sad.
Well, the buildings aren't there, but that still was the location. And here's the history of what happened there. And that's what this does. It just preserves that accounting of where things were and what they were at that time.
Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, it doesn't offer protection though.
Nope.
Well, the record should reflect Mr. Leffster has a demonstrated special?
No, I was about to say that.
Okay, so we got one.
I stepped in that.
All right, so you'll bring this back to us?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So, there's clearly an interest in this, and so we'll look forward to the follow-on discussion.
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Well, then, I guess with that, we're ready to move on to item 13, which is the Transportation Master Plan Discussion. Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
Just a reminder what we're doing here. We've been working through the last several months, the Transportation Master Plan, which is a several-year event, not event, several-year effort. Sorry, I'm not feeling really well. Which is implementation of the master plan. And we have been, we had one session with you where we talked about in its entirety what the different chapters would be. This is the second time we're coming to you with Chapter 5, which is the Subarea and Corridor Analysis, which was our consultant study in 2020 on six different corridors and subareas. And you'll be reminded as we move through it, there's different sections for each one. So, we've already reviewed with you the Eldersburg area and Finksburg. And you had some outstanding questions. We'll be bringing those back everything at once, really. I think we're not going to report interimly. And then, today, we're going to do Hampstead, Manchester, and Mount Airy. And again, it's not the towns, it's the general area. It goes beyond the town boundaries.
When you say Chapter 5, is Chapter 5 of what?
Of our Transportation Master Plan.
Okay, thank you.
So, when we send you, you should be getting something that looks like this. Maybe it doesn't online, but this will be the format that we're using. And then, Claire will be coming to you on December 7th with the Tony Town area. And I'll be doing Westminster on December 13th session. And then, we'll be done with this chapter, and we will bring it to you. We'll compile it. We'll bring back the outstanding questions to you in January. Then, after that, we'll move on to the Plan Major Street section, which is very related to this because a lot of these improvements we're talking about are in the Plan Major Streets, although it does go beyond that. So, just as a reminder, that's what we're working through. And we'll probably spend a few sessions on the Plan Major Streets because there's a lot there. So, I'm just going to turn it over to Claire to do Hampstead and Manchester.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
All right, so, yeah, we're going to start with the 11 by 17 that you have in front of you. And we're going to go through Hampstead, Manchester, and then Mary will go through Mount Airy. So, and I apologize, I forgot to number the pages, but in the future, they will be numbered. Easier to follow along that way. So, Section 1 is Road Network. MD 30 is a principal arterial for the full length of the subarea through Manchester and Hampstead and provides access south to Reisterstown and north into Pennsylvania. Maryland 482 and 27 intersect 30 in Hampstead and Manchester, and both provide access into Westminster. And under recently completed projects, we have a mile and a half of the Hampstead streetscape, which was completed in 2020. The next section is Land Use and Demographics. There's low overall growth rate in the subarea. The majority of the population growth is expected towards the northern part of 30 in Manchester. And employment growth is expected toward the southern part of 30 in Hampstead, where there are several large areas for potential industrial development. And then, population growth in Baltimore County and southern Pennsylvania can affect travel patterns through the subarea through 2040. The next section on the right is commuter flows. We have incoming flows. 27% of workers come from within the subarea, 14% from Westminster and Baltimore County, and then 11% from Pennsylvania. Outgoing flows, 28% of Hampstead and Manchester residents commute to Baltimore County and 16% commute to Westminster. So, in the AM, we have traffic flows that are headed southbound on 30 and in the PM, northbound on 30 towards Pennsylvania. Moving to page 2, we have Local Goals and Policies. 30 through Manchester and the bypass through Hampstead primarily serve through traffic from Pennsylvania. The four-mile Hampstead bypass mitigates congestion through downtown Hampstead and has allowed for a Main Street feel to return to the town. And the Manchester bypass may not be feasible or affordable for a number of reasons. Noted is the cost benefit is out of proportion. There is a little right-of-way that's been reserved, and the alignment poses significant environmental issues. So, in the subarea, we're going to go over existing traffic conditions. 130 southbound, the slowest travel time. And I don't know how well you can see this map. I can probably zoom in a little bit. You can't see it very well. But this is the intersection of 27 and 30. So, southbound, the slowest travel times are between Limeboro Road and 27. Northbound are, the slowest travel times are in the eastern section of Manchester between 27, basically along the Main Street. And despite slow travel speeds along 30 in Manchester, intersection delays are low besides the northbound approach to 27, which is a Level of Service F, which is right here, and it's marked by the red. And then, lastly, approaches from Westminster Street, which is down here, experiences longer delays during peak hours. That's not the actual, that's not the road 27, but it's Westminster Street coming into 27. So, we're going to go to the next page. We have 2040 traffic conditions with no improvements. Population growth in Manchester and Pennsylvania. And then, employment growth in Hampstead will draw additional traffic to the corridor. And 30 in Manchester will moderately worsen by 2040 without improvements. And that can be seen on this map to the right. So, then, Planning Approaches and Recommendations. Again, we went over the constraints that the Manchester bypass, that's associated with the Manchester bypass. And in fact, it's not in the Baltimore Regional 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan where the highway needs inventory. And then, in January, when we go over Chapter 6, you'll see that we, it's recommended for? for removal from the Plan Major Streets section of the Transportation Master Plan. So the consultant study recommends strategic local connections that prioritize alternative routes between residential areas and local destinations, and this is to minimize the need for local traffic to use 30. And the approach is to pair enhancements along 30 with local access improvements, like I said, to divert local traffic off of 30 and to keep through traffic on 130. So the consultant has outlined six, what we call MPPIs, most promising potential improvements, and we're going to go through those real quick, and that's going to be one of the other handouts that you have. So on the first page is just basically an overview of where those improvements are, and then on page two, we'll start with improvement number one, and that's to convert the intersection of 27 at Westminster Street to a roundabout. This will enhance access to residential communities northwest of 27 and 30. Number two is to provide a signalized left turn lane from the 30 to Westminster Street, and then traffic calming along Westminster Street. In the northbound direction, this will provide more reliable access to residential communities and to Maiden Lane, which acts as a service road to local destinations. And then, if you follow my cursor, this is Maiden Lane right here, it parallels 30. Improvement number three is to widen the intersection of Maryland 27 and 30. So the 27 approach to 30, the recommendation is to provide a separate right turn lane, a shared-through-left lane, and then a separate left turn lane. Improvement number four is to add a left turn lane from 30 northbound onto New Street, allowing traffic to flow past left-turning vehicles. Recommendation number five is to extend Southwestern Avenue to Maryland 30 to create a four-way intersection or a roundabout with Maple Grove Road, and we can likely expect this upgrade in conjunction with the development of the Lippi property, which is right in here. And then, the last recommendation, number six, is to upgrade Maiden and Long Lanes, which run parallel to 30, to facilitate local trips, and that also includes upgrading some parking for the businesses right there. And then, the last section is Benefits and Impacts. Better connection of the roadway network paralleling 30, like I said, will allow residents to make local trips without getting into the congestion on 30, and it'll allow through motorists to move quickly through Manchester. So we can go back, if you all have any questions on the MPPIs, or if you have any questions in the document in general, and that's all I have for Hampstead, Manchester.
Okay, turn it over to Mary.
And then, the third one. Are you on the next page? Scroll down. Oh, okay, we're still here, MPPIs, alright. Okay, the next area to talk about is the Mount Airy area, and this subarea is home to Carroll County's only interstate highway, which is a 1.6-mile segment of I-70. I'm going to double-check that, I think that's a little generous, I don't think we actually have 1.6 miles.
Give or take, yeah.
Yeah, give or take.
Right, yeah.
But it's very small. The Maryland 27 interchange with 170 provides access from the subarea west of Frederick and east of the Baltimore metropolitan area. Maryland 27 itself is a principal arterial from I-70 north to the boundary of the Mount Airy municipality, and is a minor arterial elsewhere. And further north in the subarea, Maryland 26 intersects Maryland 27 in the very northern part of the subarea, and provides access east to Eldersburg and west of Frederick County. So traffic volumes in the corridor are the highest on Maryland 27 approaching I-70. There was, in this subarea, not in Mount Airy, but further north, one recently completed project several years ago that the county contributed to, which was a roadway realignment of Maryland 27 Ridge Road at Gillis Falls Road and Harrisville Road, and that was basically a safety improvement. It didn't add capacity, but it has greatly helped the safety there. So, moving on to land use and demographics, the town of Mount Airy is in four counties. Population and housing growth are expected in the northern parts of the Mount Airy DGA, with the majority along Maryland 27. Employment growth is likely to concentrate in downtown Mount Airy and on the corridors leading to downtown. Also significant to employment growth in this area is the Harrison-Lay Shear property, containing approximately 160 acres of future office park employment zoning bordering Maryland 27 and Watersville Road in the town's municipal area. So all those things were factored into this analysis. Regarding commuter flows, there's notable commuter flows to Baltimore County, Baltimore City, Frederick County, Howard County, and Montgomery County. Considerably more Mount Airy residents work in these counties than within Carroll County. And while Mount Airy workers come from all over the region, the most significant portion come from Frederick County, at 23%. Regarding local goals and policies, Mount Airy's comprehensive plan, which I believe was 2013, seeks to address existing and future congestion levels and create opportunities for increased connectivity. Main Street provides an important connection through the downtown and to homes on the west side of Mount Airy, and it carries significant peak hour traffic and experiences delay, especially south of Ridgeville Boulevard. So the town's comprehensive plan, which they are currently working on their update to, and we've been, Hannah's been working with them through that, Hannah's not here anymore. They do not plan on making any changes to this chapter at this point, they haven't worked through it all, but we're keeping up to date with them, they plan on continuing on the policy that they adopted in 2013, the policies. So they identify in that plan several key roadway connections intended to manage demand for north-south travel on Main Street and Ridge Road. Existing traffic conditions, moderate congestion and intersection delay occurs along Maryland 27 through Mount Airy in the AM and PM hours. All signalized intersections, except for one, operate at Level of Service C or better for both peak hours. Travel speeds of 35 to 44 miles per hour in the morning, and 30 to 34 miles per hour in the evening along Maryland 27 are typical. However, all of the side street approaches from Ridgeville Boulevard north along the corridor operate at Level of Service D or worse during at least one peak hour. So most of the recommendations coming forth are intended to address that. Congestion also occurs at the intersection of Ridgeville Boulevard and Main Street in the AM peak hour, largely driven by delay in the eastbound direction. I'm going to skip over with no improvements and move, unless you have any questions on what you've read, and move on to planning approaches. So the consultant identified two approaches that can be taken to address the impact of Ridge Road congestion, Maryland 27, on residents' travel needs. Improving Maryland 27 intersections to make it more attractive for local trips most directly addresses conditions at the most congested intersections, environmental and right-of-way constraints are likely to be lower, and it provides direct travel benefits for motorists from points north. And also, improving parallel routes to local destinations so that Maryland 27 remains reserved for trips by bypassing the center of Mount Airy. And this directly improves residents' access to local destinations while reducing their need to travel on Maryland 27. He also identified another strategy, which is just really an idea right now, but it was included. The county could pursue a strategy that encourages motorists from north of Mount Airy to access I-70 via Maryland 94 Woodbine Road instead of Maryland 27, because of those recently completed improvements at Gillis Falls Road. Again, this wasn't, there weren't details provided, there's no map of this, it's just an idea that possibly to get some of that traffic moved over to the east. But the recommended approach is improvement should support throughput on Maryland 27, avoid encouraging use of Maryland 27 for shore trips, and provide alternate routes for trips stemming from development on the east side of Mount Airy, so that those shore trips will not occupy Maryland 27 capacity needed for the road to effectively perform its bypass function. And again, the county should explore minor improvements along Maryland 94, which could ease some of the traffic. So I'm going to go to the MPPOs, and as you can see, five were, I'm sorry, six were suggested, and one has already been completed, I believe it was in conjunction with the development of the Chick-fil-A off of Ridgeville Drive, and let me just move on to that map. So these two improvements went together, which is to have a single-lane roundabout at South Main and Rising Ridge, and, nor are these arrows that I put in, because that wouldn't work, but this is the area we're talking about. So in conjunction with the turn restriction that's already been completed at Ridgeville Drive, this will reduce weaving along South Main Street, meter traffic approaching the Ridgeville Boulevard intersection, and provide for easier access to Main Street and Ridgeville Boulevard from Rising Ridge Road and South Main. So let me give you a better look at this. This, you can see here already, that was one of the MPPIs, it's a concrete barrier so that you can no longer come out of this shopping center, make this left to get on to Maryland 27 and then 70. So it makes you either go over here and down and on Maryland 27, or up and around, but a roundabout would allow residents to go around and then come back down more easily. So since the one has already been completed, I think there's importance in the second one, the roundabout, that has not been completed. The next ones are all, these would be very beneficial improvements. I know sometimes we've brought some of these minor improvements to you, and it seemed like they wouldn't really make a difference. These would, and these are on our Plan Major Streets. The first one is extending Center Street east of 27, and that's here. There are hundreds of homes over here that, if they didn't have to get on to, well, actually, they're over here, so there's these two things, if they didn't have to get on Maryland 27 to go down to the areas of Mount Airy, the Twin Ridge Shopping Center, and they could just use this connection here, and then likewise, on the other side, on the west side, connect Center Street across the Beck property. This is a property that's currently under consideration in Mount Airy, the development of the Beck property. It's going through the process now, but it's mixed-use, it's some commercial, some residential, and this connection connecting Center Street here and then allowing Beck Drive down there, both of these things together would pull a lot of traffic that doesn't have to be on 27 off of 27. So those would be two very beneficial improvements. And again, when you get to the, when we get to the Plan Major Streets section, you'll see that the full upgrade of Maryland 27 is included, but again, the consultant was looking at smaller projects, things that could be done through the development review process that would make an improvement. So the last thing is the benefits and impacts of those MPPIs. Within the immediate Mount Airy area, these improvements would improve local traffic east and west of Maryland 27. And in addition to facilitating local access, completion of these improvements will help improve mobility along Maryland 27, alleviating travel to points west via I-70, as well as provide better access to Montgomery County via Maryland 27. These improvements could significantly benefit current commuters, but could also potentially increase development pressure, that was a downside, especially in the southeast quadrant of the county, that was pointed out by the consultant. And that's really all we have for Mount Airy. Does anybody have any questions?
So, is Route 26 and 27 considered part of this area?
It is the very northern boundary of it, and they did not make any, they really focused, the consultant did, on, they did. But if what you're getting at is the increasing, I drive that way, yes, that's getting.
It's busy, and there's a development going in just north of that intersection.
Yeah, just a few, I don't think it's very many houses.
That one isn't, that I think is only seven houses, maybe fourteen at the most.
We just approved that.
Yep, within the last year or two.
And that's considered neighborhood, too, I remember from another meeting, that whole intersection there with the old buildings and things.
Well, that's a rural village.
It's a rural village, yeah.
That's a rural village of tailors.
It was part of the neighborhood for the zoning, that's where he's talking from, yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
If you're familiar with the area, you can go many other ways, like ever, to Woodbine, to avoid that boggle right there.
And I think that's one of the, that was that sort of vague recommendation made by the consultant that maybe people will start to take advantage of, because there are.
Woodbine's pretty crazy at evening, though, especially at Woodbine and 26.
Yeah, when you're coming up from Route 70 through Woodbine, that's pretty constricted, too.
Yeah.
Howard County into Carroll County. I guess that's one question I've had, you know, when there's, and I missed the meeting last time, but I did watch the meeting online and the discussion about Finksburg and 140, which was really interesting to me, because how I live right there. What's the interaction with other counties? So, you know, the 140 in Finksburg coming in from Baltimore County, the Howard County coming into Woodbine, you know, up Woodbine, is there any discussion when the consultant is looking at these issues or potential solutions, are they road-based, or are they just Carroll County?
So, it's, oh, I'm sorry, I was going to say that, it's a little bit of both. So they're state highways, right? 140 is a state highway, 32 is a state highway, so the state looks at them comprehensively because they're the state roads.
Right.
However, in our priority letter, which is the annual letter that the commissioners submit as Carroll County's priorities for state road for improvements, then that's the next list that we would say in Carroll County. However, we have done projects, and we've worked with, excuse me, Howard County in the past, to make sure that we're reaffirming both our 32 sections. We have not been successful with the Maryland 140 stretch, but we do look at it comprehensively, and I will say, going back to Claire with the Manchester-Hampstead, you know, we have reached out to Pennsylvania, we know what their plans are, but it's really hard to get the, another state to pay for our improvements that their development is imposing. Honestly, we even worked with MDOT to kind of come up with some solutions for what's happening in southern Pennsylvania near Limeboro, so, but yeah, I mean, and we're also part of the Baltimore Metropolitan Council, so we're all aware of what each other's issues are as part of our long-range transportation plan.
There's a new long-range transportation plan for the region that's in the works that I don't believe this body needs to approve, but we'll be bringing it to you, and I think it's being released in the spring, probably, it's going through the BRTB, I think.
And that's a federal flow.
Just so you get that more holistic view of the whole thing.
And that's a constrained and unconstrained, so the unconstrained is what would we like to see in the Baltimore region if we had unlimited money, and then it's constrained by what the federal government has allocated, because we need to do the long-range transportation plan as part of our federal requirements for how we allocate federal transportation funds.
I mean, especially, too, for me, because the Hampstead-Manchester area is my neck of the woods, so seeing some of these proposals for 30 is quite refreshing, because I know for me, on my commute home, thankfully, I don't have to go too far into Manchester, but there's many days where... but there's many days where, because of those lights, it's backed up past CJ Miller, and you know, you're just sitting. And what we've actually found in my neighborhood is because there are ways you can weave through that a lot of people, primary Pennsylvanians, know that way. So, you know, I mean, to the point that we literally have the police speed trapping in our neighborhood at points and times because they just, whoo, you know? So being able to keep that traffic 130 is going to be very welcome, very welcome.
It seems like with Mount Airy, you know, you've got the confluence of, what, four counties? Is that what you said?
It is, but it's really mostly Frederick and Carroll. It's, there's a little bit in Montgomery and a little bit in Howard.
Okay. Because we talked about Finksburg last time. You know, Commissioner Manz was talking about, well, what they're doing in Baltimore County does have an effect on what we're doing. And if we're not coordinating, then sometimes, or at least knowing, but it sounds like we do know what they're doing, even if it's, it might not be particularly helpful, or it might be, but at least we know. And so we can take that into account.
Yeah, that's a very challenged stretch because we ask 140 to act like 795 when 795 ends. And it's just, I don't know.
It's not that.
I don't know what the solution is.
Right, right. Well, the fact that we're studying it is good. I mean, in some places, you build a committee to kill something. But here, I think we're actually doing things that are really constructive and focusing on areas that maybe we can have it, some influence. I heard one time that studying traffic is a combination of like wave theory and water. Like Stephen, you were talking about, you know, if you've got a main artery that's clogged up, water starts to leak in other places. Well, traffic does the same thing. It starts running through neighborhoods and starts going these other places whether you want it to or not. And sometimes, like in Mount Airy, if we're coming up with ideas to have the what, the traffic go in other areas, well, then they're going into Frederick County or maybe somewhere else. And what does that mean? So it just sounds like to me, you are looking at it comprehensively, or at least as comprehensively as you can.
As we can.
Yeah, because of those two places that we've talked about, plus Finksburg, those are the necessities.
Yep.
Well, I was on the soapbox last time about all this transportation money. Hopefully, we'll see some of it. More of it's sloshing around now than ever, so it's coming in our direction.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. Great discussion. Claire, Mary, thank you both very much.
You're welcome.
Let's see. Is there any general public comment?
I don't see any general public.
Oh, okay. And I'd be happy to entertain a specific for journal.
Yes.
And make a motion. Will you adjourn?
A second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.